That touches the lives of everyone who lives here in some way, the housing and homelessness crisis. Two important important partners in local government are here with us today. First is Gillian Shoney, Director of the Collaborative Homeless Response System. She will provide an overview of how Multnomah County and the City of Portland are partnering on a two-year roadmap. I'm also honored to welcome my friend, Portland Mayor Keith Wilson, joining us for the first time and sharing his blueprint for ending unsheltered homelessness. We look forward to discuss to a discussion on how we can best leverage our resources, our ideas and our compassion. Our city and county partners across the region have helped thousands of residents using supportive housing service funds. But the humanitarian need is still urgent. We often talk about how we can improve outcomes. That that phrase holds so much weight. The outcomes we are talking about are individual lives and the improvement it is from. A life where one can die simply from being outside versus safety, stability and the dignity of housing. We must effectively and collaboratively represent, wait a minute. Sorry, excuse me. We will, we can all see the need in our communities and it's growing. And I'm glad you all could join us today to keep working on this crisis. And I'll now turn it over to our presenters.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. And Counselor Simpson, thank you for your remarks. Very much appreciated. So my name is Gillian Shoney. I, for the record, I am the Director of the Homelessness Response System. My job is based in Multnomah County. We are, my partner and I, here, we are two of the small but mighty team that helps to support the collaborative efforts primarily between the City of Portland and Multnomah County and also our many partners that work together to address homelessness and that of course includes Metro staff. And I will let Ryan introduce himself before I go on.
Good morning, counselors. My name is Ryan Dybert. I use he/him pronouns and I work with Gillian at the Homelessness Response System. Very glad to be with you all.
And I can't see the slideshow. Is that normal? Cause I don't know. Am I clicking forward? Oh, okay. Thank you. It's thinking. There it is. Thanks, Georgia. And I am clicking. Do I? It has about a three-second lag, sometimes four when it's feeling sassy. There we go. I think this will work. There we go. Okay. So we're gonna just do some quick level setting and sharing of national and local data and then define what things are, share our status and goals and share with you what is next. And then before we go on, we will also. Hang on. I don't think this is staying on.
Let's, let's just do next slide then.
Next slide, please. So this is, this is the vision as outlined in the Homelessness Response Action Plan. And of course, that first bullet is our end game, right? That functional zero that we all want. And that third bullet is largely where the work of the Homelessness Response System and the associated action plan lives. Ryan.
If you'll go to the next slide. So before we hop into the details of the work that's currently underway here in Multnomah County and across the metro region, I want to spend a few slides to orient folks to the local and national context associated with homelessness and housing supply and affordability. It's a little bit of a how did we get there before we hop into the what are we doing about it? And and I'll start by noting, you know, that while we may have unique challenges here in the Portland metro region, we aren't in this alone at all. This is a headline from late December referring to national data from the 2024 point in time count. The photo is actually from Miami though, may look familiar if you go to the next slide. Nationally, I, I have, I've done this work here locally for a little, little over two decades now. And I have always started these presentations by saying, on any given night across the United States, more than half a million people experience homelessness. This, this year is the first time in the two decades of my work that I have to start this presentation by saying, on any given night across the United States, more than three quarters of a million people are experiencing homelessness. On a single night in January 2024, it was 771,000 people nationally across the United States. That is the largest number in the history of our data collection here in the United States. It represents from 2023 to 2024, an 18% year-over-year increase in our numbers of people experiencing homelessness nationally. And that follows an increase from 2022 to 2023 of 12%. That year was a national record increase in homelessness. This year surpassed it. In total, that means that there. Go ahead.
Are we talking the HUD definition of homeless?
Yes, these, these data all come from, yeah, correct.
Thanks.
Yep.
And real quick, so the presentation is going to be split into two. Ms. Shoney is gonna do a pretty beefy one and we'll do Q and A. And then the mayor will have some time to do Q and A and we'll limit city and county questions to Ms. Shoney. Everything else we'll throw at the mayor.
Great.
Please continue.
If we go to the next slide. So the data that I just described, this is what it looks like graphically. You know, again, this is national data from the point in time count. Blue on the bottom is on folks who are experiencing unsheltered homelessness. Red is sheltered in the middle and then green up top is the total number of people experiencing homelessness. I will say if it feels like things have, have gotten noticeably worse in the past two years, they did. And again, the Portland metro region is far from alone. Some of the context for why nationally, it's all about housing supply and affordability. Inflation has played a role, though inflation, inflationary costs associated with housing have been a primary driver of that. We'll also talk about this in the local context, but COVID-era eviction prevent protections and rent assistance that was deployed nationally was also receding during this period. If you'll go to the next slide. So this is moving from the national context into the state level context. And you know, the next three slides actually pull from an OPB story that ran last week. And I know you track this very closely at Metro, but housing production in Oregon has significantly lagged behind population growth, especially over the past two decades. So this chart in particular tracks new housing permits issued statewide. You'll see at around that mark of 2008 or so. The, the Great Recession severely constrained financing for new housing construction. And that took more than five years to recover from. We've still never recovered to pre-recession levels of housing production across the state. During that same time period though, that's depicted in this graph, Oregon saw 21% population growth. That's roughly twice the national average during that time. The State Economist recently released a report suggesting that we'd need to produce more than 50,000 units of housing statewide just to make up for historic underproduction that occurred during this time. So all of that leads to decreased housing availability, increased housing costs and increasing homelessness. You'll go to the next slide. In the, in the meantime, residential eviction filings have also been increasing rapidly. This graph shows monthly eviction filings statewide from 2020 through 2024 with an overlay of COVID-era statewide legal protections to prevent eviction. That's the yellow shading. That period coincided with a flood of state and federally funded emergency rental assistance to help stabilize households that face significant income loss. With the end of those COVID-era protections and assistance programs, statewide monthly eviction filings have increased by roughly 50% compared to pre-pandemic levels. So we now have more than 2,300 filings per month statewide. Eighty-five percent of those filings are for failure to pay rent. If you'll go to the next slide. As, and, and as people were being evicted or otherwise losing their housing during that, during this period, this is the rental market. This is a snapshot of the rental market that they were turned out into. So again, this is from OPB reporting. The left graph is Portland area median advertised asking rents that were posted on two major online rental platforms. The right graph is Census Bureau data on median family, median household income. Advertised asking rents went up 40% in the two-year period from 2021 to 2022, while incomes increased by about 13%. So if you were able to stay in your rental housing throughout COVID and into the post-COVID world, you wouldn't have seen rental cost increases quite this high. But if you suddenly have to find new housing, the market has shifted drastically. So again, all of this to share just a little bit of the context in which we're doing our collective work. I'll shift it back to Gillian to talk about that work.
Quick, quick question on this slide. Is this national data or Portland metro data?
This is Portland metro data.
Portland metro?
Yeah.
Next slide, please. Okay, so before we get to the action plan, we're going to start with oversight, what we call the Homelessness Response System. And in other words, that's the spaces where we come together, lean into our jurisdiction, jurisdictional roles and support mutual accountability. Next slide. And to the benefit of the public watching, because I think all of you are aware that the city and the county used to address homelessness separately, with the city largely focused on individuals, the county focused on families. That ended when the Joint Office was created in 2016. Fast forward to today and we still have a housing crisis on our hands, a long, under-resourced behavioral health system. COVID happened and then newly highly addictive drugs hit our streets and here we are today. That new reality is, and the need to define more clearly, our local performance metrics and goals are what really drove the city and the county toward a renegotiated IGA. That agreement was passed by both governing bodies last summer and better response to the moment that we are in today. First and foremost, that IGA outlines our oversight and accountability structure. There are three bodies that make that up that we call the Homelessness Response System. This structure was developed jointly and it is literally what is keeping us focused on moving through and beyond this crisis moment. And this is what I think is just very important for everyone to know is that what we develop together is how we are maintaining leadership and staff alignment and we just will not be successful without that. In addition to the oversight structure, there is an action plan attached to that IGA. And it includes goals, additional overarching outcomes and related action items as well as a shelter expansion strategy. In other words, the Homelessness Response System is responsible for both the immediate actions we need to take to end unsheltered homelessness and the long-term actions needed to better integrate, integrate our safety net. And then finally, I just want to be clear that we see the oversight we have under the HRS and action plan as additive to the SHS local implementation plan. And even though that they were developed with two very different moments in time, there is alignment and I only see that alignment growing as both plans are refined as time moves forward. Next slide. These are the three bodies that make up our oversight structure. That steering and oversight committee is where our elected officials sit. Elected, two elected officials from the city, two from the county, the mayor of Bresham, as well as some health and housing partners, a business community representative and also an SHS taxpayer. Second is the Community Advisory Committee and that's where folks with lived experience. We have people with lived experience, individuals who, who have engaged in our behavioral healthcare service providers and just generally those who offer diverse professional backgrounds, identities and then live throughout the county. And finally, the Implementation Committee, which I fondly refer to as government bureaucracy and where change is realized. That includes our respective chief operations officers, department leaders, bureau leaders, including Metro staff leadership. And then I just, the next slide, please. That's just a few words I'm going to share from our Implementation Committee members where it just feels like a really positive and productive space more so than ever. With that, next slide, I will shift it to the actual plan and Ryan will share with you the goals and then also attempt to share with you in visual form the alignment between the goals of the action plan and also the local implementation plan under SHS.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So as, as Gillian noted, the Homelessness Response Action Plan was drafted concurrently with intergovernmental agreement between the City of Portland and Multnomah County to create the Homelessness Response System. That was, it was drafted originally, the plan in March of 2024 with extensive public feedback and briefings to the Portland City Council and Board of County Commissioners. It was finalized and adopted through that IGA in early August. I would describe it as a short to medium term plan to address homelessness with a strong focus on expanding services and improving alignment across particularly health, behavioral health, employment, public safety and housing and homeless services systems. All of that is with the aim to help people get better access to the services they need to move from homelessness quickly back into housing and stability. It's a, it represents a systemic approach with a strong focus on short-term reductions in unsheltered homelessness. Next slide. The plan itself is organized around nine goal areas, each with its own set of detailed action items. There are 120 action items in all. Each of those action items identifies a key responsible party who owns that item and a deadline for completion. It's probably the most dedicated articulation of collaborative roles of the city, county and our multiple partners that I've seen in the two decades that I've worked in this policy area here in Portland. Next slide. Of those 120 action items, a little more than half were due for completion in 2024. This is a graphical representation of the status of those action items as of December of 2024. At that time, we'd either completed or formed ongoing work groups to complete more than 90% of those action items in the first year. I would say it was an ambitious and fast start and we genuinely appreciate the attention and focus that all of our partners, including Metro staff, brought to that early work. In the next slides, we'll provide several examples of action items that we've completed to date. But the focused early work has really helped us to establish and convene our oversight structure, develop our key performance indicators and begin reporting performance on a public-facing dashboard. We've been able to open more than 600 beds of additional shelter, roughly a 23% increase. And that's putting us well on track to shelter or house an additional 2,700 people before the end of this calendar year, all within roughly six months of enacting the IGA. So if you'll stay on this slide. The next four slides cover each of the nine broad goal areas in the Homelessness Response Action Plan. You'll see those in the left-hand column as we move through these slides. And for reference, we've helped to, I'll say admittedly and completely, map those goal areas to focus areas in the Multnomah County Local Improvement Plan for the SHS implementation. That's the right-hand column. So I'll briefly walk through each of the nine goal areas on the left with a few examples of action items that are completed or underway within each of those goal areas. So starting at the top with the goal area focused on data and analytics. This started with internal work to improve our existing data systems to help us all get access to useful system and program level information. In October, we launched public-facing dashboards, which we'll cover a little in more depth later. And we're embarking on longer-term work for data integration across systems to improve care coordination. So particularly with our health system partners. As part of this goal, we completed a significant action item in partnership with City of Portland and a range of shelter providers to begin piloting real-time shelter availability tool that just launched in the fall. I think important but less flashy and I'm looking at folks like Hunter here. You know, some of the work that we are doing is coordinating with Metro, Clackamas and Washington Counties as well as with our state partners to begin aligning and standardizing service definitions so that we have more consistent data collection and reporting across all of those funding sources and jurisdictions. The next goal area focuses on system development and alignment. Primary action items under this goal are, look at breaking down existing silos to create better alignment across government and providers, especially among housing and homeless service providers and primary and behavioral health systems. This is focused on better assisting people to get access to the care that they need. Some action items that we've already completed here. In addition to establishing the Homelessness Response System, the Joint Office of Homeless Services has developed an outreach and engagement strategy work group that's focused on addressing remaining barriers we have to building out the national Built for Zero standard of a quality by name list. The last goal area on this slide includes our work to expand behavioral health capacity. The work related to this goal primarily being led by our partners in the County Health Department and our coordinated care organizations, building on work that the Oregon Health Authority has done to identify system gaps. So over the course of the plan, this goal area means we're going to secure, we're going to have more secure residential beds, a 24/7 sobering center and more intensive case management capacity across our systems. Next slide, please. Oh, I'll say also just on this last, on that last goal area, you'll note that several of these goal areas really closely aligned with the work already underway to support tri-county planning body goals, especially related to coordinated entry and health system integration. So those, those go very much hand in hand. On the next slide. Thank you. The next of our HRAP goal areas there in yellow focuses on shelter expansion and moving people into housing stability from shelter. These, these action items largely build from the Joint Office's leadership in developing a community sheltering strategy, including a strategy to expand the inventory of 1,000 shelter beds across our population-based systems and to focus on housing placement from shelter with better staffing ratios, rental assistance and other best practices from other cities. This goal also focuses on improved housing retention, especially in supportive housing with increased funding for dedicated permanent supportive housing units. The next goal there in blue, that area focuses on housing supply and affordability. The action items under this goal lean heavily on Portland's five-year housing production strategy and coordinated implementation of recent state-level policy investment shifts to increase housing production across the board. I know that, that that's work that Metro is leading and is, and is going to continue to be a leader in. We're excited to continue partnering there. Next slide. The goal area in green focuses on addressing and preventing homelessness among some of our most vulnerable populations. So many of the action items under this goal work to strengthen and better align existing programs in government and with our providers. Focus it focused on ending discharges to the street from healthcare settings, from incarceration and from youth aging out of foster care into homelessness. Each of these systems discharge practices and their relationships to homelessness is really complex. So this is an area where our team is acting as a convening body to bring together parties from across different departments, different levels of government, key outside partners to work together at a number of key tables. Some of those tables, like metro-supported tables associated with the tri-county planning body, health systems alignment work, bring that work to a regional, not just county scale. So again, we're looking for those areas of intersection and cooperation wherever we can. In pink, the, there, we have an additional section of what I would call slightly more miscellaneous strategies and action items that we're tracking. Most of those fall further out in time, but some early completed items in that area include funding outreach services at library locations through last year's county budget and exceeding goals for action items associated with programs like Move In Multnomah to help place or retain 214 households with rent guarantee. And then our last slide covers three additional HRAP goal areas and wraps up this summary. So three, there's a significant goal area establishing the new governance structure for HRS that Gillian described. Action items in that goal area have been completed. Our goal focusing on strategic investment. So these are the right money questions, looking primarily at ways to leverage Medicaid investments for better access to services and increased federal match and moving upstream for increased sustainable federal investment in the work. Healthshare has been a key partner in helping to move work in that particular area. Again, significant alignment here to the TC PB health system integration work. And then last, our goal area focused on communications. Early action items in the goal, in this goal area have also been completed, launching a new website, public and partner facing communications, the update on progress toward our key goals and metrics and launching the HRAP dashboard. So speaking of that, I will transition it back to Gillian to talk about some of our key performance indicators and the dashboard work.
Yeah, just very quickly, as we complete this bridge between the two plans, I just took a snapshot of the dashboard that is required for the local implementation plan. And this is mainly to the benefit of the public where you can track our progress there. Next slide. So hard pivot back to the HRAP plan. These are the, each of the nine goals and the 120 action items are meant to be in direct service to these key performance indicators that you see on your screen. 2,700 people more placed in shelter or housing by the end of the year, 15% increase in exits from shelter to housing by the end of the year. And then of course, in the context of permanent supportive housing, and I should do, I should have that capital P, capital S, capital H, 75% of the people still remaining in that housing 24 months after placement. Next slide. And then Ryan touched on this. These are the additional overarching outcomes, ending discharges from these other governments, other, other systems that I think we have a little bit more direct control over when you compare it to, you know, economically driven homelessness and that is inpatient settings, carceral settings or jail or prison, to use plain language, and then youth aging out of foster care. Those are three systems that we're looking at and a lot of the focus of the energy for our work plan this year would be on those three boxes. Next slide, please. And then this is the dashboard that is out there that Ryan also referenced where you can track our progress. That is just sort of our first set of quarterly data. You know, we are, we're only one quarter in, right? In terms of what we've been required to report out, but next week we will get our next set of quarterly data. So you will see shifts in those numbers very soon. And let me just check the time. Okay, we do have time. So then in the next slides, what you will, will walk you through that, the most recent data regarding those key performance indicators. And I just, a little bit about our process before I hand it back to Ryan. So we get our quarterly data sent to us. What we do with that data is we first bring it to our Community Advisory Committee and our Implementation Committee. We let them chew on that data and then together we come up with a set of recommendations that we then send up to the Steering and Oversight Committee for consideration. So that is part of our oversight and accountability process. And in addition to that, I just want to state for the record that we also have joint sessions between the Board of County Commissioners and Portland City Council. It's not required, but we have a, we, we set a goal and something that the chair and the mayor care very deeply about of just reporting out publicly in that venue as well every quarter. So the next one is scheduled for February 26th where you will see our new set of data. Ryan.
So I'll quickly walk you, quickly and inadequately walk you through four of the key performance measures that Gillian just talked about in her most recent dashboard. Again, these are data through, through September of 2024. Within the next couple of weeks, we'll be updating this with data through December of 2024. So this, think of this as a little bit of a preview. Each of those updates also comes with a quarterly report, a more narrative quarterly report. And we're, we're happy to share both the dashboard and those narrative quarterly reports back to all of you as counselors. So just to walk through the first major. In January of 2024, there were about 5,400 people known to be experiencing unsheltered homelessness in Multnomah County. The, the goal under HRAP is by the end of 2025 to shelter or place into housing 2,700 additional people. That, that's a number equivalent to about 50% of the number of unsheltered people on that by-name list. Then, then we're sheltered or housed in the two years prior to HRAP. So prior to HRAP in calendar years 22 and 23, we sheltered or housed about 16,000 people, a little more than 16,000 people. So in order to meet the HRAP goal to shelter or house those 2,700 additional people by the end of 2025, we'll need to house 18,000, about 18,800 people in the two years from 24 to 25. We're currently on track to meet that goal. But we're going to continue to need, continue the expanded shelter and housing placement activities. But we're going to continue to need, continue the expanded shelter and housing placement activities outlined in ATRAP in order to maintain the progress. So in the first three quarters of calendar year twenty twenty four, we sheltered or housed about nine thousand one hundred and fifteen people. So that puts us at about half, about halfway to our two-year goal. Next slide. Our second measure is, is structured to, as Jillian noted, to look at folks who are being sheltered or housed as compared to how people appear in the population who is experiencing unsheltered homelessness in January of twenty twenty four. So the goal here visually is that you want the gray bar to, to match the blue bar. So the blue bar is our actual placements into shelter or housing. The gray bar is the percentage of the population experiencing unsheltered homelessness. So the goal is to have that blue bar exceed, equal or exceed the gray bar. So generally speaking, across the board, we're meeting or exceeding our goals for all of the priority populations with one exception. So in that most recent quarter ending in September of twenty twenty four, those who were black, African American or African were twenty one percent of people who had been sheltered or housed, though they represent twenty three percent of the people who are unsheltered at baseline. So that's going to require additional focus, even though that's only a two percentage point difference in real numbers, that's about two hundred people. So our first quarterly report focused on actions to, to help to improve our performance under that goal. If you go to the next slide. The, the ATRAP seeks to improve exit rates from adult shelter into permanent housing by fifteen percentage points. So that's from the baseline of twenty six percent of all exits from shelter, adult shelter into permanent housing. So improve from that baseline of twenty six percent to forty one percent of adults exiting shelter by the end of twenty twenty five. As of the end of September, we're not on track to meet that goal. Current exit rates from shelter to housing are at twenty three percent. So actually three percentage points below the pre-ATRAP baseline. The ATRAP does call for a fair amount of specific focus in this area, and the joint office has been working in collaboration with the city to put funding on the ground to help support this goal. So we expect in future quarters that this is going to start to shift as those investments come online. And then last slide for this series. We maintain the goal of assuring that people retain permanent supportive housing. The goal is seventy five percent of people in permanent supportive housing retaining that housing at two years after. We've consistently each quarter exceeded that, that goal point, currently eighty four percent maintaining permanent supportive housing twenty four months after placement. Back to Jillian.
So next slide, just very briefly, current priorities and what next, in addition to our work plan and focusing on those overarching outcomes. I think it's no secret that we are experiencing budget shortfalls. We're adjusting to the revised forecast for SHS. We are watching the actuals very closely. And then, of course, we have general fund shortfalls for both the county and the city. So we are working in real time right now, both governing bodies, primarily the mayor and the chair. Right now are trying to figure out how do we, you know, fund our existing system that we have up and running as well as the remaining, the remaining beds that are part of our expansion plans. And then, of course, very much connected, all of this is our collective effort to advocate in Salem. Come, go to Salem with a united front for what we need in terms of our existing shelter system, behavioral health, rent assistance, all the things that we need to be successful. And so our government relations teams are working on that in real time right now. Next slide. And the final thing, we're running on time here. Is just, I want to talk to our shelter expansion strategy and I think show you in visual form where we're at. So if you go to the next slide, that is just dates back to twenty fifteen. You will recall in twenty fifteen, that is when the first housing state of emergency was declared. And then soon thereafter, the creation of what is now known as the Joint Office of Homeless Services. You can see by the dots on that map that shelter capacity was, it was limited, higher barrier and concentrated in the downtown core and the central east side. Next slide, jump to twenty twenty one. And this shows you where we got during the pandemic. By this point, we had also changed many things, right? We went to lower barrier shelters, opening, keeping them open twenty four hours, beds by reservation, adding villages. So new shelter types and welcoming partners and pets and, and possessions. So that's where we got over that time period. If you go to the final visual slide, that's where we are at as of December twenty twenty four, just a month or so ago. And that includes the SRV and task sites. And you probably can't count this quickly, but that's forty two dots on there. So it's forty two plus the five that are not mapped for privacy reasons. So all told, on the next slide, you'll see this number, three thousand one hundred and forty three. That's how many shelter beds we have funded and are in operation every night in our community. Next slide. Just to provide you some detail that you can look at later, this was sort of shelter strategy phase one. By the end of twenty twenty four, we had four hundred and twenty nine new beds online. Those zeros in that column will turn into the numbers that you see on the left side, on the left column over the course of twenty twenty five. And then the next slide is just to give you a glimpse, our phase two. So phase two of the community sheltering strategy, those are the target number of beds by population served. And all of that is sort of in the works at various stages. And of course, subject to the budget discussions that are, as I've said, alive and well right now. So at this point, you get to ask questions before I kick it over to the mayor. Counselor Simpson.
Thank you so much. A lot of information to digest, counselors, questions? Counselor Lewis.
Sure, thank you so much. Thank you for the comprehensive presentation. Very much appreciate particularly the contact coming in both nationally, but also the other decade into coordination and community and how we originally approached this work from very different goals. I think everybody now shares the duality of the act of therapy law around the center of system. But we also have the different policies in our community, what that means to our, you know, the street corners. The surprise for me in your presentation is that what I think of the investments that we've made through our work, the most prominent and significant investment is our Arla vouchers. And since that reflected really in the way that you're tracking data or the way that you're using your dual framework. Am I missing something or is that kind of secondary in one Arla voucher, same with your head vouchers?
What I would say is the way, the way the, thank you for that question, counselor. The way you're going to see the Arla vouchers reflected in the key performance measures under ATRAP is really in that movement of folks from shelter into housing. Arla is a, the regional long-term rent assistance program is a very important program to be able to scale that movement of folks from the street and or shelter into housing and helping them stay there. So while it's not called out separately, though, though I will say the joint office does track those metrics separately as part of their reporting back on the local implementation plan, you'll see it reflected there in that movement from shelter to housing.
No, please.
Then thinking through who is eligible for those Arla vouchers or who actually gets the opportunity. We're definitely trying to work with the most vulnerable populations, the folks who are primarily homeless with a disability who need all of the support. And traditionally, the work of the county have been extremely helpful. The easiest way to make them come to the place to housing, find them housing, put them there, it was working. Now, you know, the shelter system being built, forty two plus five, that's a lot of shelters. I think it's great that we saw that map, not just the individual location. That said, what is the level of services, service provision at each of those shelter sites? Because that's the breakdowns when you get in a shelter, they get stuck in shelter. Their shelter system doesn't have access to all those services, including vouchers, including those kinds of stuff. Forty two plus five, all of them have Arla vouchers, all of them have full services?
The short answer is no. The longer answer is that, well, the shorter answer is no. There is, services are different within the shelter system. We did dedicate some housing vouchers to the city sites to just, right? It was a new shelter type on the books and we wanted to test its success. And so we did an agreement with the city, dedicate some housing vouchers to that new system. Comes out of those task and SRV sites are so good. So you're, you're spot on. If every shelter type has the right suite of services, the right mix of services, then you will see that in the outcomes. But we do need to go through an exercise to make sure that services are equitable across the entire shelter system. So that is something we'll be looking at this year. Great, thank you. Yeah.
Thank you, Councilman Gonzalez, then Rosenthal and Nolan. I saw you had ran up this. Okay, and then Nolan.
Yes.
Thanks, President Simpson, appreciate it. And thank you all so much for coming and prioritizing this conversation with us. I sincerely appreciate it. Speaking as one of the suburban metro counselors from Washington County, I can say unequivocally that we have such a strong interest in the success of Multnomah County and in addressing this, this work collaboratively. And so thank you again for that. One of the elements that, you know, I'm noticing in addressing a homeless response is the, is the, the balance between measuring outputs versus outcomes. And I'm, I'm kind of trying to understand how in measuring these targets and goals, number of beds, number of this, which, which sounds great. When we can also start to have a conversation about average wait time to services or average time in a shelf, you know, things like that, that help us measure the overall health of how individuals are living through it. So one, I want to understand a little bit more about what are some of the, what are some of the impediments into getting to those kind of data points? And, and two, you know, the, at the, at this table, we've talked a lot about building out of the regional system, which includes regional investment fund through SHS, which includes, you know, elements of data sharing agreements that we've talked about ad nauseam, right? I'm wondering how in, in this great iteration of the ATRAP and the work that you're doing, how that regional system, how are you balancing that with kind of like crisis on the ground response? And these really ambitious goals, which I hope that we, we can hit. So that's question number two. And then question number three for me is, just so, just so I kind of understand. You, you mentioned adding twenty seven hundred beds. ATRAP has a goal of addressing the full fifty four hundred folks that are experiencing unsheltered homelessness. And in the presentation, it, it said that by December twenty twenty, we're going to cut unsheltered homelessness in half. Is that, am I hearing that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're on track.
All right.
So that's good news.
That'd be, that'd be incredible.
And counselor, I feel like.
More to do.
Yes, yes, absolutely. I feel like you've had lots of questions, great questions in what you asked. And it seems appropriate at this point to mention the data project. So both named in the LIP and in ATRAP is that the joint office is on the tail end of improving that by name list that we all want. So I'm hopeful that like next month, we'll have their, they will be done with their, their cleanup, their deduplication. And we will have that new baseline next month to work off of. And I, at that time, counselor, is when I will have a complete understanding of how we can slice and dice that data to perhaps get at some of the questions that you were asking about how long somebody is waiting for services, for example? How long are they staying in X shelter type? All, all that stuff that I think we all want to know. So stay tuned on that front. And then I think Counselor Lewis also touched on this, and so I feel like it just needs to be named. And I hope I state this clearly. You know, when SHS became a thing and that plan was written, right? It was really focusing on that inflow and outflow that we're dealing with when it comes to homelessness, right? How many people fall into it? How do we move them through that throughput to get them into housing? In this crisis moment, though, especially with these new drugs on the street, right? We are having to direct a lot of our time, attention, and yes, resources to that response, which is right smack dab in the middle of that teeter totter of prevention and housing placement. It's not easy, but we have to fund the response. That's why we have the sheltering expansion strategy. It's what we have to do. If I had a magic wand and a bucket of money that came with this job, right? Like, we would be able to balance those better, I think. And I am hopeful that one day we will get back to that place where we are. We, after we've expanded our shelter, we shrink back down. We find that sweet spot for the number of shelter beds that we should have in our community at an ongoing cost. But focusing primarily on these, these precious resources on reducing that inflow and improving that outflow.
Yeah.
Yeah. And just the one thing I would add to that is that, that conversation about how best to balance across those multiple components of a functioning, I mean, literally, we were sitting here before the meeting, the mayor, Jillian and I talking about this. Sky and her team are working with the joint office, with our colleagues on a daily basis to figure out how to balance this. One of the, one of the principal purposes of the homelessness response system and that shared oversight structure is so that we can continue working together as jurisdictions to figure out in real time how to continue to hit that balance as things continue to evolve.
Great, thanks. I think that's it for now. I might have more later, but want to keep the conversation going.
Thank you, Councilman Gonzalez, Counselor Rosenthal, and then Nolan.
Thank you, Chair Simpson. First of all, I, I have to say, I very much appreciate the presentation. I live out in rural Washington County, so the complexities of the situation in Portland, and I had some experience in Lane County, but the complexities of the situation in Portland is sort of mind boggling to me. So my questions may, may just show my ignorance, but bear with me, please. So I had three, well, I had a lot of questions, but that's, you presented a lot of information. I mean, one of the questions is to what extent or what proportion of the, the resources that Multnomah County and Portland have comes from SHS? But that's a smaller question. My bigger question is to what extent, and I recognize historically that some of the faith-based communities have been important in providing temporary shelter and also some services, to what extent and how are they integrated into the process? That's one question. And then the other harder question is, you projected that you need, that we need two hundred, two thousand five hundred housing units. As you know, our, our housing bond is, is spent. I mean, we basically, it's all allocated. So where, and the state has some limited resources, but has statewide responsibilities. Where are we going to come up with the resources to make those units available, to make them into an existence? So I guess those are two questions. Faith, faith-based, and I could also ask about the hospitals too, because as you know, they are the first resort for many people with the behavioral issues. They go to the hospitals. And I know OHSU has been working on a, on a dashboard, and I'm just sort of wondering a little bit more how that's coming in.
Great. I'm, I'm happy, counselor, to speak first to some of the engagement with, with faith communities and, and also with hospital system partners. Just very briefly, I know the mayor will highlight some of the, the work that he's engaged in as part of the, the shelter expansion plans on that front. But also just to lift up some of the work that's encapsulated within the plan in partnership with the city of Portland to address housing supply across the board. Actually, working with faith communities to develop a toolkit so that faith communities that have available land can work with developers to actually be able to produce affordable housing on that land. So that's a piece that was called out within the homelessness response action plan that reflects back to the, the city's housing production strategies. And has been a, I think, a really promising area of engagement with faith partners beyond the emergency shelter capacity. In terms of our ongoing work with hospital systems, again, this is where they're. In terms of our ongoing work with hospital systems, again, this is where there's strong intersection with the tri-county planning body, um, directed work around health systems integration. We've worked with OHSU, Providence, Legacy, Kaiser to, um, to begin looking at where their discharge planning systems have the, some of the most significant gaps in terms of folks being discharged back to homelessness and where we can work together. And that, that's a, that's a reciprocal relationship, right? That means that we need places for people to go. But once they get there, we need access to those services that the hospital systems and other behavioral health providers can, uh, can bring into those spaces to help people be stable and successful there. So promising areas both.
Did we hit them all? I lost track.
Uh, you asked what percentage of the expenditures were SHS? We'll find that out for you. I don't know that off the top of my head.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Nolan, and then, uh, we got the mayor.
And then we'll hear from my mayor, yes. Thank you all for being here. I'm delighted to get this information. I want to, um, augment a bit of what councillor Gonzalez referred to um, with respect to the difference between outputs and outcomes. For example, one of your measurement charts showed by a bar chart of increasing number of people served. I want to see one that shows number of people needing services marching down to zero. And I want to be convinced that your teams, own staff, nonprofit partners, other partners are focused on that one. And in the same way with your shelter. And, and it's not just because I want to see that graph. I want to see and know that that mentality, that that approach to it is focused on functional zero. The county is bought into, built for zero, and that aims for functional zero. My, in my hearing from the voters that I represent, they believed that that's what they were investing in, in ten years. That in ten years, the region would be at functional zero. I don't see us measuring it, and it's not just this county. The other counties aren't. Similarly, I believe that the humanitarian response to truly unsheltered housing, camping on the street in temperatures like we experienced last night is urgent. It won't be solved just by the make available. We have to get people to those beds. We have to, as you've already talked about, get services that meet each individual's needs at that. So I'm hoping you're measuring utilization of those beds. And when it's not at ninety plus percent or pick the, I, I'll defer to the experts, but where it's not where it should be, we are rearranging the way we approach it. We don't keep doing the same thing that left us at almost sixty percent occupancy. We say, huh, that's not working. How can we change our approach? Is it more social workers? Is it more outreach workers? Is it a combination of outreach workers and law enforcement? If, if we're not getting where we need to be, we need to change the actions we're taking. Um, finally, I didn't see as a goal on your chart, investment in services for population A. The measure that the voters passed and our own IGA with Multnomah County says seventy five percent of the revenues should be spent on population A. I was running for this position when this was being referred by the Metro Council, so I didn't sit at that dais, but I participated in a lot of the community meetings. That seventy five percent was best I can tell, and our team here from Housing will tell me if I'm wrong, was a very crude approximation of what it costs per capita to serve that population into dependable housing compared with the per capita cost of the other homeless population B. Are you, are you measuring that? Do you know what your population A is? Do you know what you're spending on it? And can I go to the voters and say, yep, we're doing what you asked us to?
If the joint office were sitting here, right, and speaking to the local implementation plan, which I am just not as familiar with, they could answer your question. And then I didn't show the complete dashboard, but, um, some of that data is displayed there. So.
Do you have one goal, which, I mean, I would think it's the only real goal overarching, to get to zero?
Yeah, I was, I was smiling as you were describing that because you, you, um, this is literally a conversation that our Steering and Oversight Committee took on in, uh, in, uh, just a couple of meetings ago, where they said that should be our primary goal. We should be tracking that more closely. Right, 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 yes. And so this is, this is where this plan gets to both be, uh, uh, transparent, accountable and adaptable. If we don't have the right goals, we're going to reestablish them to be able to track them. So, uh, the joint office is actually in the process right now of working on that inflow and outflow combined metric so that we can get to, are we seeing net increases or decreases in populations of folks experiencing homelessness? So we're actually right on the cusp of being able to do that. So that's why I was smiling as you were exchanging, because I think we're going to give you exactly what you're asking.
If you need to push over the edge, let me know.
We're, we're good, it's moving.
And Mr. Chair, I will just acknowledge, because I don't want to hold up the mayor anymore. Ms. Shoney, you mentioned, um, resources and state. Um, and I'm hoping that we can march arm in arm with our Portland, other cities in this region, the other counties and Multnomah County to push for adequate funding, uh, given the complexity of need and the concentration of need in this region.
Well, we welcome your support in that realm because we typically, well, let me back up. This session, there's about a seven hundred and thirty million dollar pot for the variety of things that we need, existing shelter, rent assistance, et cetera. What this, what Multnomah County has typically gotten in the past is about eighteen to twenty percent of that pot. That is out of alignment with the fact that we have forty percent of the houseless community members in Multnomah County. We need to get closer to that forty, that fair share, in my opinion. If we are actually investing in the people who need services, then we do it on that headcount, right? Those people need, we need money to help those people and we are stretching SHS, I think as far as it can go, and we need more. So there is a united front that we will march down to Salem with. We, um, if you want to lean into that with us, we welcome that.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Wilson, the floor is yours.
Oh, wait, about my last slide. I was going to give him a nice entree, a softball.
Excellent.
So the, the final slide, if you could just show that and then pivot to the mayor's. So this is what we've done together. I think the mayor has shared the story that the day after Election Day, he and Chair Vega Peterson met. And this is what, um, they agreed upon to do together as, um, a first step for, uh, the mayor's plan. And with that, I will hand it off to Mayor Wilson and Sky.
Yay.
I'll start while they're bringing that up. Can you check, check? Okay, good. Well, first of all, thank you, Ryan, thank you, Jillian. They've been great partners throughout this process. Can you hear me? Is the audio working? Okay, thank you. Well, thank you again to Ryan and Jillian. They've been great partners throughout this process as we learn and create that, uh, relationship to move Portland forward. Also wanted to just take a quick second and say, uh, it is wonderful to be here today to be able to speak before some very good friends that I've worked on and with projects for this last four or five years. To be on this side of the table is a great honor. And then certainly to be able to present to you this, uh, very important discussion. Again, uh, thank you for this, uh, privilege. This is our blueprint to end on shelter homelessness in Portland. We face an overwhelming crisis. Too many of our neighbors are sleeping and suffering on our streets. Heroic work has gone into helping our neighbors and thousands have been helped already. That work must continue. What I'm talking about today is a plan to relieve the crisis, to relieve the suffering. And when we do that, the other parts of the system are elevated and all of it begins to work more smoothly. And the entire Portland community will be able to recover from this crisis. It's no secret that our housing ladder is broken and Ryan outlined that, I believe, well. For those without stable housing, what's the bottom rung? The housing ladder is missing that very important lower level. And for our unsheltered neighbors, it has become a tent, a tarp or an unsafe RV. Two thirds of Oregon's homeless live unsheltered now, representing one of the highest unsheltered homeless rates in the nation. We cannot turn our eyes from the suffering and we must change the way we think about this crisis. Next slide. Portland has the highest unsheltered homeless rate in our history and the unsheltered are dying in unprecedented numbers. The recent domicile unknown report shocks the conscience. Every conversation and working session we have must be about unsheltered homelessness and it must reflect the moral imperative this number represents. We cannot look at this chart and think in terms of three year plans or five year plans or ten year plans. We must think in terms of the most good we can do right here, right now. This last three weeks in Portland, we lost three people to hyperthermia. We have no response to care for our community. We must change the way we think about this crisis and immediately and decisively act. Next slide. All of Portland is impacted by this humanitarian crisis. Ten years ago, a police officer would respond in six minutes on a priority one call in your time of greatest need. Today in Portland, it's twenty four point three minutes. Firefighters, paramedics, even public defenders, they're all overwhelmed. Our systems aren't designed to operate normally while first responders simultaneously serve on the front lines of the largest and greatest humanitarian crisis this city has ever faced. Here is why the public disapproves of our current strategy. They have begun to associate increased spending and the promises we've made with increased suffering, not progress. Our victories ring hollow when the public sees unsheltered homelessness and domicile unknown deaths rise year after year after year. Next slide. Livability and economic issues are compounding. Our job creation is among the worst in the nation. We see more and more closed storefronts. In one downtown neighborhood in twenty twenty three, there were ninety five closed storefronts. This past year, there's a hundred and fifteen closed storefronts. It's not getting better, it's progressively getting worse. And behind every one of those closed storefront is a broken dream in our community. Commercial vacancies in our urban core are the highest in the nation. And our livability has gone from being one of the most desirable cities in the country to one of the least. The Urban Land Institute, a metric most of us know, we are now ranked eightieth out of eighty one communities in the United States. The Urban Land Institute takes and aggregates livability, real estate values, investment propositions. If I put a dollar into Portland, will I get a dollar and five back that next year? We are one from being dead last. Seven years ago, we were the third most desirable community in the United States. Nothing has changed. Everything we have and the resources we need are here. They've gone nowhere and we have the opportunity to turn that around. The solution isn't complex. If we restore cleanliness and safety, livability and compassion, we can get back the community that we know we can have soon rather than later. Next slide. Every one of these pictures show people I care about. Father John built a movable shack for his son Trevor. My neighbor Elizabeth lives downtown between the Greyhound station and the tent. Because she's not required to engage or stay in shelter, she uses the shelter she keeps for food, for laundry and for showers. Because she's not, excuse me. Doug, the lower right, was dumped by emergency room security guards in a public park. He was naked except for that blanket and he had chest pains and withdrawal. Portland does not have enough emergency room shelters or detox beds and our hospitals have become the shelters of last resort. To function, they force the unsheltered into parks or on the city buses to nowhere. They're called GOMERS. Get out of my emergency room. We actually term that. The bicycle in the background isn't his, it's mine because I stopped to help him. Portland has no system to get him from where he lay in the shelter and the overwhelmed emergency room wouldn't let him back in. I was able to care for him that night and provide shelter through my network, but I don't know what happened to him the next night. And we have way too many people being released from hospitals, from prisons and detox back into homelessness. Suffering people don't get better living on the street. I want to be absolutely crystal clear. When we arrest somebody who is unsheltered, all we're doing is we're ensuring and guaranteeing that person's going to be homeless the next day. Living unsheltered puts up daunting barriers on the journey to addiction recovery, mental health treatment, job counseling and family reunions. On the street, individual outreach is hampered and those we want to help are too consumed by day to day survival to seek that help on their own or rebuild their lives. We must shift from a maintenance approach to a crisis response. We have devoted people who have been treating this like a crisis for years. I don't want to discount anything and the hard work that we've all put into it. We have to listen to them and mobilize the ci- city to meet this moment in time. Next slide. Compassionately revitalizing our community begins with sheltering unsheltered. We must prioritize emergency shelters first and then move on to day centers and solutions like Built for Zero. Thank you for bringing that up. We're not building from scratch. We'll use what has worked in the past, both in Portland and our peer cities. Emergency nighttime shelters are important, but they're not intended to provide a comprehensive solution to the humanitarian tragedy on our streets. We'll still use emergency shelters because we must treat the crisis like a crisis and respond with a full disaster recovery strategy. We must end public camping and once again prioritize the basic norms of safety and sanitation in our community. It's a necessary first step to repair, restore or revitalize the quality of life, livability and dignity of every Portlander, both the housed and the unhoused. Next slide. What happened when Portland defunded our emergency night shelters? Next slide. In twenty seventeen, the county took over shelter operations from the city of Portland and began making changes. They changed certain protocols. We primarily moved away from a nighttime shelter model to a twenty four hour shelter model. And certain shelters that didn't convert over were actually defunded and others with different unique strategies were not funded at all. In addition, our twenty four hour shelters removed and in some cases, no longer have a ninety day stay limit. We removed the requirement for a guest to engage with a counselor into services and bed utilization rules were ended. Elizabeth, my neighbor that I spoke about earlier, has been living in a shelter for over two years. She's not engaged, she's not required to engage in services. There are no stay limits and she doesn't sleep in her bed. She's addicted to fentanyl. She sleeps in a tent outside that was provided by an outreach worker and her dealer sleeps in the next tent. You see, the fentanyl drives every behavior. That photo I showed you a moment ago was her daughter. You see, she has a house, she has a loving family, but the addiction is far more consuming than any other things in her life. We've created a sticky system because she's in that shelter and she's not moving up and down the continuum because we've removed all the requirements that would help her move through that continuum. And she's stuck there. And I appreciate you, uh, councillor Gonzalez, by staying. What's the average stay? And Ryan and I were just talking about that earlier. And Ryan and I were just talking about that earlier. And not only what's the average stay, what's the maximum stay we have in an emergency shelter? Because if we have people in there for three years, is it an emergency shelter or is it housing? And if people aren't even required to be in the bed, isn't even, isn't an emergency shelter if the bed's empty, not slept in that night? Is that truly how we utilize a system of scarcity? Next slide. Today, we have about three hundred and sixty more beds than we did thirteen years ago. And while that says that the sheltered in twenty twenty-four is twenty-seven sixty, I want to use Ryan's number at thirty-one forty-three. Even at thirty-one forty-three, it's only a little more than three hundred beds we had thirteen years ago. Yet, when you look at the skyrocketing unsheltered homelessness, just in the year twenty twenty-three, it increased eight hundred and eighty-seven people, far more than any shelter capacity that we've added, and it's only going up. That represents the highest unsheltered homeless rate in the nation, except for a few cities in California. In Boise tonight, they have less than two hundred people living unsheltered. In Boston, they have less than two hundred people living unsheltered. Boston is the same-sized city as Portland. Both Boise and Boston both have affordable housing issues higher than Portland. In Philadelphia, they have less than eight hundred people living on our street in a city twice the size of Portland. In Portland, five thousand three hundred and ninety-eight. What do they know that we don't? To find out, a group of individuals and I created Shelter Portland. We've researched, we've traveled, we've met with mayors. The cities I mentioned and others mostly use nighttime emergency shelters. And we've closed ours, or we defunded them over time. Next slide. So how do we respond to this crisis? Next slide. Cost-effective, scalable emergency night shelters are not a replacement for other housing programs. Project Turnkey, Safe Rest Villages, Temporary Alternative Shelters, twenty-four-hour supportive shelters like we use and rely on today, and supportive housing are all critical roles to play. What we're talking about is nothing to take away from the current system, not to defund anything we have, it is purely additive. It's addressing the missing piece. Emergency shelters provide a no-wrong-door first step for those who are ready to move off the streets and a safeguard for those who slip through the cracks of our complementary programs. They're also a cost-effective pressure valve that frees up resources to help rest the rest of the system. They're low-barrier, trauma-informed places. They use existing facilities like community centers and churches and businesses that are ready to open up today. They're staffed with professionals and volunteers and people with lived experience. And all adults are welcome, but minors and families with children are handled a part of a different system. Sobriety is not required, but drugs, alcohol, and weapons are not allowed. They're cost-effective. Nighttime emergency shelters utilize existing facilities, eliminating construction, and most all of the capital costs that are necessary. In comparison, transitional alternative shelters often cost millions while providing fewer beds and take years to site, develop, and open. In addition to lower upfront costs, nighttime shelters are far cheaper to maintain. They're scalable. The most important benefit of nighttime emergency shelters is that they're quick to set up and they utilize existing buildings. In addition to being quick to set up, they're just as easily to flex down as the moment and/or crisis or weather events occur up and down to care for the community members that we have at the moment. We must return to stay limits. Stay limits encourage guests to engage with services and move from emergency shelters and into permanent housing. Without this rule, there is often little incentive for an individual to address the root causes of homelessness. I've had the great pleasure of visiting some of our most high-performing cities and counties in the United States. They all use stay limits to help those individuals through the system. They're generally near transit corridors to make it simple for not only the workers but the guests. We've got a partnership with Trimest that's getting ready to assist us through grants. And they're complemented with day centers because we don't want to just be a sheltering community. We must connect people with the warm handoff of needs to address behavioral health and addiction. But we also must recognize that many people that need help at night are the individuals that are working during the day, serving your coffee, making your sandwiches, they're down on the luck. So we recognize we must provide that care for anybody when they need it tonight and at that moment of their greatest need. Next slide. The response from neighborhoods, businesses, nonprofits, and faith communities have been overwhelming. It's so much more than I dared hope. Right after being elected, we were presented with forty business locations to be considered to repurpose at night. An apartment owner came to us two weeks ago and said, we have a two hundred and fifteen-unit micro-apartment building we want to provide to you. Let's partner together. And Sky is working with a hospital to think in terms of a public-private partnership. This is not just a government approach to this emergency. We have an outreach and interest from the community writ large. We had a homeless service provider listening session, and fifty providers showed up and said, we're interested, and we have a follow-up in two or three weeks to move to the next step. There are unsheltered, there are unsheltered people who are ready right now. A lot of us hear shelter, people that are shelter-resistant, and I've heard thirty and forty percent. And so I say, let's not think about the negatives. If thirty or forty percent, pardon me, that thirty or forty percent are interested in shelter right now and the rest are shelter-resistant, that's a positive, that's not a negative. It means thirty or forty percent are ready to come in right now. And so I say, we need to be ready to. Next slide. Should we combine night shelters and day centers into twenty-four-hour shelters? While twenty-four-hour shelters have an important role, converting from emergency shelters to twenty-four-hour model has downsides. In Portland, changing to a twenty-four-hour strategy roughly triples the expense without adding a single bed. Highly experienced shelter operators were defunded, and new operators with innovative solutions to homelessness, mental health, and addiction crisis were shut out. In addition, twenty-four-hour shelters are far less capable of taking walk-ins. Right now, the waitlist can be in terms of one to four weeks. When somebody needs help right now, we must be ready as well. Overnight shelters do not require coordinated entry. They are walk-in and walk-up with no wrong door. Often, excuse me, other common twenty-four-hour shelter rules have hampered Portland's ability to move people off the streets. Under the current systems, beds can be reserved even if not used. This means a guest may have the amenities of a shelter such as meals, shower, and laundry, but without bed utilization or stay limit. Requirements these that create incentive to move to permanent housing. Next slide. We are creating a crisis response blueprint at the city of Portland. I'd like to turn it over to Skylar Brock Knapp for the next section.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Skylar Brock Knapp. I'm the Director of Portland Solutions at the City of Portland, and I apologize for being on my phone, but we are in an active severe weather emergency for tonight, and so I'm actively coordinating with my team in the Joint Office. I'm happy to be here and thank you all for the opportunity. Speaking of emergency management, we are instituting an emergency management approach and an incident command structure within the city of Portland at the mayor's direction. I'm working with the Portland Bureau of Emergency Management. And these are just some basics on emergency management for you all. Some of you might be familiar, but I'm just going to go through them pretty quickly so we have time for questions. They include external partnerships, partnering with other jurisdictions, but also private entities who might be engaged in this work as well. As counselors have mentioned, city alignment and so internal alignment, so we are ready to address the need immediately and staying in contact with all of our partner bureaus. And we also manage the metrics of these emergencies. So to your point, Councilor Nolan, we are actively looking at different ways to measure every single day and to iterate based on what we learn. I think that's the best way to fail forward and change immediately and not be stuck in any one situation if it's not working. Next slide, please. The Incident Command Structure starts with an Executive Policy Group and a Multi-Agency Coordination Group. These are just important for you to understand because we are using our new form of government within the city of Portland to have a coordinated response with our city administrator and deputy city administrators, as well as coordination with other jurisdictions. So Jillian and others at the Joint Office of Homeless Services within the county, as well as other county partners, are part of our Multi-Agency Coordination Group and will continue to work with us through the course of this emergency. This Incident Command System, I will show you in the next slides, will help provide clarity and roles for the folks who are already working on this. As the mayor mentioned, a lot of folks on my team within Portland Solutions will be assigned to some of these roles that I will walk you through. They already are working on some of these pieces, but they need to have further direction to open as many shelters as possible or whatever services we might need and to iterate over time. Again, we will partner in a regional way, and we really hope that we can involve Metro and others in this process. We already work with other partner counties and cities. Next slide, please. One thing that folks might not be aware of is, to the mayor's point, other cities have a different way of kind of managing their shelter system. They have year-round shelter, as we've mentioned. Portland has increased those shelter beds, which I think is amazing. My team has opened quite a few in partnership with the county. We still need more. When we have an emergency, we do enhance outreach and services first. And then other cities usually have a surge capacity, which means those overnight shelter beds, those winter shelter beds, maybe seasonal, and they really help create clarity and consistency and predictability for folks on the street. So they know that there will be extra winter shelter beds because of the cold temperatures, maybe because of a different kind of emergency that might occur. And then there's disaster sheltering, which is, oh no, we need to add capacity right now, just tonight because of the event that's happening tomorrow. So like what we're doing in this moment for tonight. For example, when we have that surge capacity in other communities, it really helps to bolster that emergency response. So there's predictability and there's added beds in the system already. We added those two hundred beds, as Jillian and the mayor mentioned, the beginning of January, and those have really helped as part of that surge capacity. We believe we need some more to really make it a consistent system that can support everyone on the street in a more predictable way. Next slide, please. I'm going to walk you through, and I apologize for the spreadsheet, but it's small numbers, we can send this out to you as well. But I'm just going to walk you through some of our thinking and some of our numbers for how we're looking at addressing this emergency in the immediate term. As we're in budgeting season, as Jillian mentioned. So on average, a Joint Office kind of of Homeless Services twenty-four-hour congregate shelter is about seventy-five dollars a day. Again, these are just averages between different shelters. Safe Rest Villages and Temporary Alternative Shelter sites within the city of Portland are about a hundred and twenty-four dollars a night for those tiny pods shelters that we manage. That does not include development costs. So the mayor mentioned the time required and the development costs required to stand up those sites. It's significant. I can attest, as someone who has built a lot of those shelters, it will take a lot of time and will not meet that surge capacity that we need immediately. The nighttime emergency shelter costs are provided here. Here are some examples within our community. So these are real-world examples that have been opened for this exact purpose. We're looking at an average of about thirty-five-dollar cost. The mayor and I and other members of our team have looked at different opportunities, talked to different providers, and we think that on the continuum, overnight shelter can be around thirty-five dollars, and that's the average price that we're looking at. We have just released an RFPQ for day services for overnight shelter and for alternative shelter services. And so we're talking to providers, as the mayor mentioned, right now, to expand those services within the region. Some day center cost examples, these are again based on day centers that are currently open in our community. Rose Haven Day Center that serves people, women who are women identifying individuals, is about fifty-four sixty-eight a night or a day. And then PDX Saints Love, which is open in East Portland, is about a little over twenty-seven dollars. They have different levels of service, and so we're erring on the side of the higher service model, which is the Rose Haven Day Center. And so we're using that fifty-four sixty-eight number just for our purposes to create this budget. Next slide, please. And we mentioned the by-name list, so I won't go deep into the data, but that's how we get that five thousand three hundred and ninety-eight number as of January of twenty twenty-four. As Ryan mentioned, there's a data exercise with that the Joint Office of Homeless Services is engaged in right now to deduplicate some numbers and really get us an even better number. So we're really excited to see that data. But for now, we're just relying on this number. And with that number, we're looking at how many beds we need to add to the system. You saw that three thousand one hundred and forty-three bed number. There's those folks, folks are already in those beds. And so we're looking to add capacity to the sheltering system to meet the immediate need. So the homelessness response action plan, the sheltering strategy that you've already heard about, calls for a thousand beds to be stood up. Some of those have already been stood up, as Jillian showed on her slide. They have budgeted for some other beds, but I think about three hundred still need to be budgeted for. So we're looking forward to that occurring this year. There's public-private partnerships that we would like to engage in with other entities, nonprofits, faith-based organizations, philanthropy, businesses. And we're already starting those discussions. The mayor has been involved deeply in other discussions with folks who want to be supportive. And we're looking right now at partnering with Blanche House, who wants to stand up a seventy-five-bed women's shelter. We're helping them find a location, we're partnering with them on permitting, et cetera. The city of Portland specifically is also looking at adding fifteen hundred shelter beds in addition. So we're looking at those two hundred overnight shelter beds that we've already stood up. We're looking at the announcement made on Monday, Bybee Lakes Recovery Beds, with Helping Hands that will be stood up in the near term. And so we're looking at every opportunity. The mayor mentioned the two hundred and fifteen-bed apartment building that we recalled about the other week. So we're looking at every opportunity and touring honestly hundreds of locations to see what might be best used in the immediate term for additional shelter capacity. We're also looking to be geographically diverse and looking at immediate-term options. The costs associated are just on the right-hand side, but you can read that. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer now or at the end of the presentation or at any time in the future. Next slide, please. This is our ramp up for this fiscal year. We just wanted to show you the targets that we're working with. We have talked about getting a thermometer in the office just to show that we're on track. But we are already at that two hundred mark. We just announced fifty additional beds, so we are ahead of schedule at two hundred and fifty beds of that fifteen hundred bed total for the city of Portland in partnership with Multnomah County and others. We're looking at creating four hundred and fifty beds by the end of June. That is my target, that is my team's target, and we are working every single day to make that a reality. Looking under every rock we can for funding opportunities and creating as many partnerships as possible. We have already budgeted for this fiscal year, so that number is already taken care of within our city budget. Next slide, please. This includes the ramp up that the mayor mentioned for that scalability. Again, we might have to adapt depending on the need, but we just wanted to give this overarching description of what will be required in the near term for this emergency. And then I will show the subsequent ramp down of those shelter beds based on need. Jillian also mentioned the need to be adaptable, scalable, depending on the needs on the ground. You will see the month-by-month metrics that the mayor has laid out. Again, we will just readjust and learn from the data every single day, and we'll be looking at different dashboards and data metrics to determine what the need is. Next slide, please. I'm not going to go deep into the weeds on this. Okay. This is the ramp down that you will see over time next year and twenty twenty-six. And so we will adjust accordingly, again, depending on the need. Next slide, please. These are our day center budget estimates. So I mentioned the Rose Haven fifty-four sixty-eight number. We're looking at adding four additional day centers, one in every city council district. That would serve about a hundred and fifty individuals a day. That's the Rose Haven metric that we are working off of. Again, we might adjust accordingly based on the provider, the space, the need. But that's just what we're basing that service delivery model off of. They have a really high service delivery and really great metrics. And so we want to partner with them and partner with others who are doing those day services already in our community and doing them very well. That would lead to a cost of a little under twelve million dollars. And this is for this kind of one-year period, this crisis time that the mayor is talking about, so this next fiscal year. Storage units are another need. Folks might be aware, individuals need somewhere safe to store their belongings. So we already operate a day center or a day storage space with central city concern. It's in Old Town. They are very successful. They actually have space for about four hundred and fifty individuals' possessions. We just put three hundred on our metric just to be conservative. But they do a really good job, and we will learn from them on how to scale that to one in every district. The cost of that is just based on those numbers currently at that facility, and it's eight hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Next slide, please. So total byanium costs, as we're talking about a regional approach and working with the county and others as we talk to the state. These are some of the numbers we are providing, the governor's team, other legislators, and Chair Marsh in the House. Those that 15 million number, the almost 12 million number, and the 864,000 come out to a little over 28 million. And so that's what we're looking at for fiscal year 25, 26. Then we also have the ramp-down numbers if folks are interested in order to create that total byanium number of about 52 million. We are in conversations on how to raise that money, how to come together and solve these different problems. Again, these numbers and these costs will be adjusted as different elements come online. So this is our best case, like our best thinking in this moment, but it is fluid and subject to change. Next slide, please. I just wanted to touch on one piece that Gillian and Ryan were also talking about within the homelessness response action plan. That's near and dear to my heart, just based on all the acuity discussions we've already had today. These are some of the elements that we are going to the state with in our legislative ask this year. The city and the county are really dedicated to adding all of these different elements. I also want to call out what we're already seeing come online. So 74 secure residential treatment beds that are going to be on 16th and Burnside through Central City Concern. That's a partnership with Care Oregon and the county and the state and the city, and we're really excited about those beds coming online. I just toured that facility the other day, and it's looking great. We're very excited for those beds to come online. That'll be an important part of our system and a piece that's been missing. I've also had some discussions with Health Share and Central City Concern, and they're talking to OHA on some potential Medicaid reimbursement for transitional housing. We were talking about what other things can we do and add to the system to think differently because we have expended those housing bonds. I think there's some real opportunity with partnerships with the health system to make sure we maximize a lot of those dollars. So we're looking at other states and what they do in terms of Medicaid reimbursement, and I think that's a really exciting frontier, especially with this legislative session. Okay, I will stop there. Thank you. Next slide.
Okay, thank you so much.
I'll pass it. Sorry, back to the mayor for a couple of slides.
Can we get two slides and we'll get you going? So ending on shelter homelessness has become a hallmark of the relationships that I've created and the focus of our administration. So there's not a single person that I've hired or is in the administration in a high level that I haven't asked the question to participate in a city employment position. They have to answer the question, are you with us in focusing on ending on shelter homelessness by December 1st? Because we know winter's coming. We're wholly unprepared right this minute. And I'll be stepping off to a press release to say that we're gonna scramble and try and set up resources to care for a little bit of snow. And we've known winter's coming for a millennium. We're not going to be unprepared by December 1st next year. And every one of my senior leaders have said they're in. I've explained to them very clearly, we're gonna deal with challenges. We're gonna deal with financial cliffs and a federal government that is anything but friendly. And we're gonna address other assumed challenges. But I've told everybody, we have only one crisis. We don't have a housing crisis. We don't have a climate crisis. We have an ending on shelter homelessness crisis, and that's our single most controllable issue we must deal with. We will address all of those other issues in a long scoped process, but we have Portlanders that are dying tonight that we must stop to be a dignified, decent city. And so that's the focus we have in the city. And we've already begun. As Gillian noted, the partnership with county has been wonderful. Sheriff Vega Peterson, within days of me being elected, she and I began meeting week after week after week. We partnered with funding, and nearly on the third or fourth day of me assuming office, we had shelter beds opening. That relationship has to be strong for us all to be strong as a community. And the word is going out, and people are coming. The more we take care of folks, the more we're ready, the more freed-up services and momentum we're going to gain together. We announced yesterday 50 more beds, partnership with Bybee Lakes. It's not just nighttime shelters. It's all of the above focus we must have, and those are gonna be clean and sober beds where 20% of the individuals that are released from Hooper Detox this month will be released to homelessness. So one of the first calls we'll be making will be to Andy Mendatall and our friends over at CCC to say, we've got a resource for you. Please use this resource and we'll provide transit. Let's give that person a fighting chance for recovery and that next step in their long journey ahead. You know, one of the things that drives me is 75% of all of those that are addicted will go on to lead recovered, healthy, and long life, and that's a very hopeful message. So we have to be aware of that data and provide the services when that person's ready on that long journey ahead. Emergency overnight shelters are the final life-saving safeguard our city will offer. We will not let that bottom rung on the housing ladder be the street, and we will no longer foster that behavior by handing out a tent. We handed out 31 tarps in this last three weeks, 700 tents in the last three weeks, 700 sleeping bags in the last three weeks. There's not a community in the nation that I know that does this. Certainly not one that has ended on shelter homelessness, and there are dozens upon dozens upon dozens of communities I've visited that have ended on shelter homelessness. And I just want you to know, functional zero isn't just a focus that's so far out. It is being realized in most cities in the United States today. And we will realize that here in Portland as well. So long as the unsheltered homelessness crisis is a crisis, we must have a crisis response. Next slide. And we're building a movement. I'm here because it can't just be Portland. It can't just be Portland and Multnomah County. President Peterson always says, we have to be focused on a regionalism approach, and that's why we're here to you to speak and ask for your assistance. What that may look like or how that may be manifested, I don't know. But you can bet my next call after this is a sit-down meeting with President Peterson. How do we work together? And what is that gonna look like? You can help, because if we keep asking, you'll find a way to help us, because we can't do this alone. We must have this council strong and behind us to allow this to succeed. And if we succeed together, we set a template not just for Portland or Multnomah County, but for the state. And when I look at people I meet every day and those that are in this room, I don't see what we can or can't accomplish in 100 days or principal disagreements. I look for the helpers, and I'm grateful because I see helpers everywhere, including all of you. So thank you for this opportunity, and we're looking forward to your questions.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. Your name?
Sky. Yeah, no, it's done.
Before I I hand it off to my colleagues, I want to say, first of all, thank you so much. It's refreshing to have a spirit of collaboration coming out of the city of Portland, the way you've shown up today. So I just want to say thank you for that. Now, the other piece of it, right? The focus on the core, I understand it. I get it. However, there are businesses too on the east side that are impacted. When there's an action done for the core, and it's not in coordination out on the east side, we get incidents of people being struck and killed because there's, you know, there was one right on at Halsey and 119. We get incidents against in that little hotspot, cars driving into businesses that people could have been in. We hit break-ins at businesses, and there's no coordinated effort, because once folks make it to 122nd, it's almost like services forget about it. It's just sweeps. Then you get to 148, the same thing, 162nd, until it's pushed off onto the smaller cities. Now, we talk in aggression, but when we talk about Wood Village, Fairview, Troutdale, they don't have the same capacity or impact, and there's no coordination happening on the counties with them. And they have said on record, I put those letters on record. I would like to understand how we talk about Portland as a whole instead of just the core. Because when you don't include the east side of the city, you kind of other us. You really do. You set us to the side, and you make us feel like we just catch the brunt of what the core doesn't want. So help me understand how we have a more inclusive conversation that includes East Portland.
Yeah, I appreciate. So let's talk about numbers, too. Washington County has less than 200 unsheltered. They're at functional zero. Clackamas County is less than 200 unsheltered. They're at functional zero. Gresham and those cities you mentioned, while they might be Multnomah County, Gresham has 21 unsheltered souls on their streets. They're at functional zero. Portland, I explained how many individuals we have, over 5,000. And while those communities are functional zero, counselor, you are you are at ground zero. Because we do these removal actions in the central core, and they move out to East Portland. I have a shelter on 82nd Avenue. It's open today, right this minute. And when we did those actions four or five months ago, no negative to you, Skylar. Understand, this is not personal. Well, maybe it's personal, but I'm not trying to chastise people. But we moved all those people, the 82nd, 122nd, 168th. You look at the RVs that are pockmarked throughout those communities. What I've explained to you is we're ending on shelter homelessness. Those are the individuals that are in tents, makeshift shelters, and RVs. And if there are individuals on 168th, which there are right now in a grouping of RVs, those individuals are suffering, and we must bring them in, or tents outside my shelter on 82nd Avenue, or the nighttime shelter that I partner with on Tal in I-205, tents all around. Those are people suffering. Those individuals have to be asked to come inside, and those resources will be removed. So counselor, if there are people suffering in your neighborhoods that are visible in the sense of tents and makeshift shelters, we can provide a bed for somebody at night.
I think it's more than that for me. It's it's how do we coordinate? Because you you spoke of folks who don't want the help, and that oftentimes feels like the people who come to ground zero, where we are already impacted by many layers of poverty.
Well, if those individuals are sleeping in a business's corridor, that's against the law. And so we have to have an outreach worker there to help that person. I want to help you. What does it look like? But you can't stay here, because you cannot impact a business owner's ability to run their business. A storekeeper's doorway should not be treated as a toilet or a bedroom.
Or a driveway.
Or a driveway. So you see, those are our basic codes. They're not just there to help the housed. They're there to help the unhoused, right? So if you're looking for, I I don't know if there's an answer I can give you other than we will be caring for all Portlanders in all four corners.
Could I add to, counselor? So Portland Solutions has problem solver meetings that cover every single inch of the city. So there's 16 problem solver meetings that are specific to those neighborhoods or districts, and they happen every other week for 30 minutes. So we actually, 122nd and Gleason, and then to Burnside is my hottest hotspot right now. So I have meetings every day about that area. But we encourage folks to attend those meetings, whether you're a resident, a business owner. We have police, fire, outreach workers, behavioral outreach workers, county individuals, city staff, who are on those calls for every community. And so I think they're a great opportunity to bring folks together, to understand the resources, to be educated, to name certain issues or certain problems, because people who are living in those areas or working in those areas know those neighborhoods the best, and so we want to hear directly from them. So that's something that we found is really successful, and I'm happy to share those with anybody that might be interested in your district.
That'd be great. I will say, before I pass it to Counselor Gonzalez, Nolan, and Lewis, new administration, same energy from how we get all we street in East Portland. Same words, same lip service. So I'm looking at you for action, and I'm gonna hold you to it. Thank you.
Counselor, let me add. We have 200 beds that we opened within days. We opened 50 yesterday. We are not going to stop until we end the crisis on our streets in Portland. So I appreciate that pressure. And I and I know that I have you by my side as we move down this road.
As long as you got the actions that back it up. Thank you, Counselor Gonzalez. Counselor Nolan, Lewis, and Rosenthal.
Thanks, Deputy President Simpson. I want to start by recognizing this, what feels like a radical transparency in terms of how we address it down to the numbers per person service. I think it's how we win back people's hope in our ability to address the problem. So thank you so much for going to that granular level and also seeing the incident command system approach to me feels like a welcome signal as well with the crisis. And you're right, mayor, we need to treat it like a like a crisis. And in your closing remarks, you mentioned something that, you know, I've learned in my work in in community organizing, even even before my time on Metro, which is when a community is really frustrated or angry, there is also passion there. And when there's that passion, there is a desire to channel action. And what we need to continue to do every day is identify ways for not just the public sector response or our nonprofit contractors or everyone else that's working within the system, but it's the businesses, it's the churches, it's the folks that love this city, love this region, and they want to do their their little bit. In Spanish, there's a saying, un granito de arena, which is like a little grain of of sand. And every time that you move that grain of sand, eventually you can build a mountain. And that is where I feel like we need to, we need to initiate this work again. And I think that is the spirit of the SHS conversation that we've been having, is that we really needed to bring folks together and buy into this mission again. At least for me personally, I'll share that. My first question for the for the mayor, five weeks into the job, how's your sleep? Just kidding. So the serious, serious question. President Peterson is assembling an executive work group to work on for the next few weeks on SHS, as you know. And appreciate you a lot for engaging in in the ways that you've been able to. What is your hope and outcome for that process as our region continues to lean into this question of of regionalism? Question number one. And what impediments can this agency help you with and the joint office with to support this bold plan? And your your connection to the livability, to our future opportunities as a region is inherently linked to our ability to compassionately address this crisis, and I appreciate that. So you have willing partners here. They were, we want to, we want to get our boots on the ground with you. So I would look forward to hearing your answers, and thanks again for making making time for us.
Thank you, and thank you for the years of support from you, Counselor Gonzalez. I really was an interested and passionate community member up until January first, but you always opened your door and allowed me to have significant and substantive conversations with you. While I didn't have the agency, that just shows your leadership in the community, willing to engage and listen. So thank you. The first question you asked was about SHS. I'm ambivalent. I see us spending billions of dollars with zero improvement. In fact, I've seen us decline as a community from a moral standpoint, from a situation where I see my friends, I ran into a high school classmate last week suffering from mental illness, unsheltered while I'm doing the pit count, and I, and it's not the first classmate, classmate I've run into. Where have we lost our dignity and decency to care for our community members? So the ambivalence is manifested in conversations where Counselor Simpson and I were in meetings discussing the SHS. And I was clear with the county chairs. I was clear with all the mayors. Until we focus on the greatest need, this funding on the greatest need, it is hard to support it. Because when I see Washington County with a reserve $123 million today and 168 people on their street, and in Clackamas County with 33 million or 23 million in reserve and less than 200 on their street, and Gresham with less than 21 people on their street, and it's only Portland, it's only Portland we're talking about. While we completed with Multnomah County, Portland is the jurisdiction that has over 5,000 people living on the street. And we can tell you stories about where they're from. As the SHS worked, it has been an abject failure as the mayor of Portland, and I have to call it out as such. Am I willing to talk and and have a conversation on it? Yes, but I've been crystal clear, until the greatest need is addressed, which is Portland, why do we even have this? We were sold in 2020, quote, end the homeless crisis now. Counselor Nolan, you have that sign at your house.
And in my office here.
And have we even come remotely close in terms of Portland? The answer is an abject no. And as mayor, I took an oath. I'm in charge of public safety, and when I have neighbors living and dying, three died in the last three weeks to hypothermia. And when I have neighbors living and dying, three died in the last three weeks to hypothermia, because I couldn't provide the, the, the basic necessity of a bed at night that's free of the elements and a toilet. So thank you for the soapbox. Um, as far as supporting, I want your support in this plan. Does it mean a council resolution where I hope every one of you vote yes, and we show the community that we're interested and stop talking about uh SHS and we stop talking about um rental assistance, which are all necessary, and we start talking about ending unsheltered homelessness first? Because you have to end unsheltered homelessness before you can end homelessness. We've tried to end homelessness. And in so doing, you saw that slide, we keep talking about we're going to end homelessness. And we see what happened with unsheltered homelessness. It skyrocketed. I'd love to see a resolution. Yes, I'll be talking to President Peterson in a couple of weeks, saying how does that manifest with financial contributions? We have RV disposals that we're spending tens of thousands of dollars on. We've got uh waste removal from encampments that we're spending. How can we get our jurisdictions braided together to care for our community? To where we can lower that overall deliverable cost so we can succeed on December first? I see councillor Lewis, how does that work though? I don't know, but I know if I keep asking, people have been rushing to help. And that's what I know. And that's why we're here.
Spot on. Uh, and thanks Mayor for uh, again, your radical transparency on, on what you see from uh your position as mayor. And you know, this, this council has leaned into this conversation pretty heavily on SHS as we're midway, midway through our, our ten-year implementation period.
Yeah.
And recognizing that this body does not have all the tools that we need to to, to, to fill the promise that was made to voters. And so um, you know, I know that I and my peers, we, we uh, we, we need your, your leadership uh in a partnership to keep working on this. And so um, uh, there's a lot of work to do. Thousands of people have been helped. But you're right, there's also a, an element of a, a huge priority area that we're not addressing with urgency. Um, that I think we need to as well. So anyway, thank you uh as well. I asked you the question. Um, I'll, I'll uh get it back to uh the rest of the council.
Thank you. Um, I know we only have you for about another fifteen minutes or so. So um councillors be very concise, please. Sorry. Uh councillor Nolan, Lewis and then Rosenthal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Sky. Thank you. Um, you are very eloquent. Um, and urgent about the human side of this issue. Um. And I appreciate your sharing the stories of people that you have personally been in touch with. Um, I also want to echo councillor Gonzalez's gratitude for your transparency. I would add to that your disruptive innovation, um, which I say with a great deal of admiration. Um, I think I'm convinced and I believe with my whole heart that the voters are convinced that we need not just radical transparency, but radical reassessment of how we approach this. If it's not working, quit doing it and find something else. Um, I do hope that we can find areas of overlap. Push us as hard as you push your bureau directors and your other allies. Um. I agree with you. And the measure itself says we need to emphasize unsheltered homelessness. Population A has, is defined as having additional complications with disabilities. We cannot end homelessness until we do that. And I think we need to have a conversation very quickly. It shouldn't take six months to have the conversation about what this measure will deliver. I don't think we have a consensus among the three counties now on what the target outcome of this measure and these investments is. And absent that, we're pulling in different directions. And that is a guarantee that collectively we will fail. And Mr. Mayor, I think it is that we will continue to fail. Um. Uh. Let's really get on this. Let's act like partners. Let's use the same tools. Let's truly think of this as my neighbor is as important as your neighbor. Is as important as East County and Washington County. And we need to serve the people who fit the description called out in our measure. Keep pushing us. Um, I push my colleagues a lot and I need company. Thanks.
You know, it's interesting. I was in an SHS meeting the other day and I said, we have to focus as if this were a NATO event. If one country is under attack, all the others must collectively come together to care for that country. And I said, our city. And if our city fails, our region fails. And that's our national uh symbol right now. That's Fox News is making a mockery of us. And President Trump uses us regularly. So let's turn it on, the entire nation, and show them what a well-run region looks like that leaves nobody behind. And we should have that ability to accomplish that.
Let's show that those of us of a pers- progressive persuasion know how to govern and deliver results.
I look forward to your support.
Store some faith in government programs.
Thank you. Uh councillor Lewis and then Rosenthal.
Sure. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor, for being here today and for bringing uh your optimism. I think it takes a lot to actually look at the failure that you've bluntly called out um and still be able to project multiple paths forward as you've done today. Um, I have a couple of thoughts. Um. I'm gonna start with the, I mean, I'm not gonna do the sandwich. I'm gonna start negative. I'm gonna end on the high note. Um. I think in response to your critique of our system having spent resources on tents, tarps and sleeping bags, those are life-saving measures. They're low cost and they're low touch. And I just want to be eyes wide open to the fact that every sleeping bag and every tent does keep somebody warm and dry when literally nothing else in that person's life will do that for them. And there are other cities that use tents and tarps. Um, they're just more prespec- per- prescriptive about where you can pitch that tent. Um, you know, I was just in sunny San Diego and they had tent camps of a hundred and fifty tents uh provided by the city or the county. So um tents are a part of the solution. That said, uh, when you are speaking, you use this beautiful word of guest. So often in this context, we refer to people as homeless, the homeless, sometimes homeless person. Sometimes we medicalize it and call it client. But you use neighbors and guests. And I think all of us should adopt that language. Uh, it, it connotes respect. It connotes agency. And it connotes hospitality, which uh service centers both day and night are known to provide. I don't want to lose that sense of hospitality, even as we weave through all the requirements of service. Third, I heard you mention that you were um optimistic about a public-private partnership about some micro units. I want to share that excitement. From a housing development perspective, I would hope that you would consider temporary housing, transitional housing and not converting them to shelter, because highest and best use of something that actually qualifies is housing, please. Um, shelter has lower standards. I'm sure you are already along that line of thinking. Um, but we cannot let um units that have gotten to that high standard not be actual housing. Um, and then finally, I appreciate uh the sentiment that there is no wrong door in the system you envision. My question for you is how do you hold that there is no wrong door alongside the fact that the challenge with shelter is there are some people who are dealing with some really heavy stuff. There are some people who the barrier of not having drugs or alcohol or weapons on them is a no-go. And there are also people who want shelter who don't want to be with those people. How are you gonna sort them? How are you going to help people meet the right door where they're at? Whether I have got my bottle of wine or not, whether I have my drugs or not, whether I have the desire to have none of that or not. Where do I go? How do I both have no wrong door and also need the right shelter?
I'll let you, I'll give you the fourth. Let me take the first three and you'll be able to tell them about the magic, alright? Um, first of all, I appreciate the comment regarding tents. But the cost of a tent is only the cost of a tent. When you think about the removal of that tent, it's a thousand dollars or thereabouts to remove that tent, are we really? To think that that is a life-saving measure, we're fostering unsheltered homelessness by providing a tent that creates unsheltered homeless. I want us to do a mind shift, because it's not just a seventy-dollar tent that we think is low cost. It's the cost of that stream of costs, the removal, the livability, the, the normalizing to our children that that's a possibility in your life. And where's the hope in that? So I appreciate your comment. I appreciate the pushback. I love that discussion, but, but it's not just that seventy-dollar life saving. We should do more. We should never leave somebody on the street, never, ever leave somebody on the street, in my opinion, and.
Are you talking like civil commitment? Like you're not allowed to be?
No, no, no. Uh, where, where a community has to provide a tent and they say we don't have anything better. We have to be that community where we always have something better than that, I would hope. That's what my goal is and that's what I'm fighting for. And so I, I appreciate that, that comment. Guests, I used to call them souls. And then a bunch of people said, hey, you know, there's not a whole lot of religion in Portland, so let's stop doing that. I thought, well, wait a second. So that's just what I used, and guests is the next best. So. And then micropart, I agree. My hope is, is that that's such a huge offer that somebody provided. I think in partnership with county, we could find a wonderful use for that that does focus on long-term housing as opposed to a short-term shelter. So I think that partnership with county and that relationship were really important and really create a magical thing for Portland, instead of it just being a shelter. I agree with you. And then on the, the no wrong door.
Yeah, um, thanks councillor. So I think um that's a question I think about every day. Um, and our outreach team does a really good job at the city of determining an individual's needs, because we're kind of tasked with working with the folks who are the highest acute. So I think our um temporary alternative shelter sites and our safe rest villages and the fifty recovery beds that we just brought online are all elements of that system because of the different populations that we're dealing with on the street. Um, and I think to your point, there's a safety element in shelter. Um, the fifty beds that we stood up um for the safes, the women identifying shelter um and on Burnside um is very specific. And we're looking at opening a couple of other women identifying shelters as well for that purpose. Um, LGBTQIA plus uh shelters as well. So we're looking at all the different possibilities, because I think the benefit of scaling to that degree and adding that much capacity is you really get to be um discerning about what piece of the puzzle is missing and then add that accordingly. We have a lot of culturally specific providers who are really interested in providing that specific care that they are excellent at. Um, NARA, for example, um just reached out and wants to open kind of their own shelter and really have that access to shelter space, because they're seeing that deep need with their population. So we're looking at all those different possibilities. That is um my hope and that is my intention. And every day, it's hard to find the exact right space for every individual. So we're also working with the county and other um service providers who provide outreach to really coordinate in a way that we haven't coordinated before. Um, because what we're seeing is folks who are engaged with multiple outreach workers, uh different organizations, wanting to get access to different services and really make sure that we're streamlining that process and making it more efficient. We're engaged in a strategy um group right now to create geographic locations where outreach teams and certain providers would just focus on that specific geographic area. That's something I've been advocating for for a long time and I'm very excited about. Um, because it also gives us data and we're able to say, this outreach team is here right now. They know this individual. Let's check with them to see what they need, what other services they've been engaged in, what they've asked for, who they might be connected to. Um, I encounter, we encounter a lot of folks in nineteen um who, you know, have been dealing with, so that people know that by name, know their, have their mother's number, have gone to court with them, have put them in housing multiple times. They really have been on decades-long journeys with individuals in this town. And so I think we have to wrap our arms around every individual for their needs. Um, but to the major points, he's tasked us with creating no wrong doors. So I have to create as many opportunities as possible so that I have as many doors as possible. Uh, and I think there's just a certain match that each individual and we're gonna have to just grow and learn um as we iterate. So. So um, it's my hope that we can create as many different types of shelters as possible, because that will allow us to create that floor to make sure that everybody has an opportunity. Um, and overnight shelter, as we've talked about, um is a really easy way to add capacity right now. And so I think having specifically, culturally specific overnight shelter to really look at day center capacity, we can match people with um the specific services that best meet their needs. Uh, but I think case management is also a huge piece of this puzzle um that we're really focused on.
Let, let me provide an anecdote. So Jess McMillan lives right outside City Hall. Uh, first day or two I started on the job, I went up to him because as mayor, if I walk by him and you walk in, I've created a policy that allows that to be the case. Right? So if I walk by a paper on the ground and I don't pick it up, I've created a policy to the six hundred thousand souls I lead, that that's okay. If I walk by somebody in human suffering on the street, it means as mayor, I've created a new policy, because everybody's gonna mimic what I do. So I explained to council that I've been working with Jess. I've got vouchers in my car. I've got shelter for him when he's ready. Jess is from Coustebe. He suffers from behavioral health issues, super nice guy. In fact, when I talked to him, he said, I own Portland. I said, that's great. I happen to be your mayor. But he suffers. Sky goes to work. She finds him shelter. He finally accepted shelter, but he can't live in a shelter. So she immediately moved him to a safe rest village. You see, his vulnerability was too high. He couldn't work with others. Schizophrenia and stuff doesn't allow people to hear voices in your head with fifty people around as well. She moved him to a, a, a safe rest village, which is great. She found his need. He couldn't work in a nighttime shelter. The problem is, is that he's right back to, right outside City Hall again. He's back camping. He just moves every couple of days. You see, we don't have the laws to enforce to say, hey Jess, it's time to come inside. I want to help you. What does it look like? Where do you want to go? Because she'll find what he needs, because it may not be a nighttime shelter. It might just, it might not be a high school kid who just aged out of foster care, who's just down on his luck, working a subway, trying to get his first month's rent, right? That was me uh forty years ago. I was unsheltered and I just needed a few bucks. I was living at LaGuardia Airport. You see, there's so many different ways. But we can't let the street be that destination. So we will find somebody that can continue and find the right spot and get them in that spot. Yeah.
Good, Councillor. Councillor Rosenthal.
Uh, thank you, Chair. First of all, I want to thank the mayor very much for bringing this information to us and for the detailed presentation. Uh, it's really encouraging to see the level of detail and the willingness to, you know, get into the weeds and talk about some of the details and even down to the numbers. I think that's, I think that's great. Uh, I was at a discussion with, with the faith, faith-based group last night. And as I pointed, I tried to point out to them, you know, when we started this process, we really didn't know very much. We were very naive in what we were doing. We had hopes and we had, you know, we had a North Star of trying to make it last, but we really didn't know. We didn't have a consensus on the, the details. So I think, I do agree that we haven't had some success. We've had a great deal of success considering the relative short time we've been at it and we've learned how complex the problem is. It's more complex and different in the city of Portland and in Multnomah County than it is in my district, in the city of Wilsonville and the city of Sherwood. Different approaches and different things. Two of the things, when we started the process, we had placeholders, the seventy-five, twenty-five split and the allocation of resources. I think those are the hardest things that we're gonna have to wrestle with coming forward. I hope that the new committee, the new regional committee is going to have, shall we say, the wherewithal to really deal with that. Because I think these are things that are gonna have to be adjusted. I think we have to realize that they were placeholders. And that the real need is still. Real need is still. Both the ability to approach the need as well as the need itself is different in the city of Portland. Than it is in some of the outlying areas, but we still have to, you know, for example, Congressman Simpson said, district has different needs than some of them. The city of Tiger, than the city of, of Tumalton. And we have to recognize, we need both the overall principles as well as the flexibility. So there's a lot of work going forward. There's a lot of work going in the next two years. I think we're on a, on a path to make readjustments, hopefully uh with a, a strong support and a strong consensus on the part of all the stakeholders, the nonprofits, the business community, the uh, the faith-based organizations and the cities and hopefully the county, the counties and the cities going forward that we can. Going forward that we can do something in November and keep moving forward and create a structure that is more flexible and more uh adaptive to the regional needs. So that's just sort of my general statement. I was gonna ask a question about um when you had about uh community values when it comes to um camping and R V use. I think you answered that question. You said it has a lot to do with we can't interfere with businesses, we have, we can't have unsanitary conditions on the streets. I think that that's sort of, you've sort of answered that question. The question I want to ask actually is a little broader. I consider the um the principle, I consider equity, diversity, and inclusivity. How we deal with people and we recognize that different groups have different vulnerabilities to different kinds of situations. Do you see any, as we know, the the current federal government has said, that's a program that we are going to de-emphasize in all the things we do. Do you see any problems with coming forward in how we're going to be able to use access um and implement federal funds or federal guidelines regarding this? Or can we just say, these are basic principles and we can, we can work with them as basic principles so that we can apply, so that we can address the disparity, the ethnic disparity that that we sometimes see. Sometimes see on these things, car serial, whether it's car serial or the use of uh, you know, different communities use drugs differently and so forth.
Yeah, do you want? Yeah, yeah, I can speak um just quickly, Counselor, too. Uh we are looking at all of our kind of federal dollars right now, frankly, as I'm sure every jurisdiction is. Uh but I think the benefit, frankly, of the S H S dollars and of the city and county partnership is a lot of the dollars that we're talking about um are either gonna come from the county, the city, the state, or local private partnerships. Um so not a lot of federal dollars that I think will actually be integrated kind of into this plan. Uh I would love if they are, but my anticipation is there will not be um those dollars available. Uh we have some urban uh money that is still being spent on shelters, but we don't anticipate that being pulled back. I will knock on wood as I say that. But according to my grants team, they don't think that will happen. Um I think the mayor's been very clear about our city values. Um and he's gonna uphold those values accordingly, um and we will continue to integrate that into this plan. Uh but I think the benefit of being in this jurisdiction is that there's a lot of people who want to be helpful and have voted for taxes and measures that will support a lot of those processes and helping folks off the street. Um and really addressing those barriers to entry or um systemic inequalities that we're seeing within this process.
Counselor, just to specifically address the D E I focus. Brian had it on his slide. Unsheltered homelessness is disproportionately represented by people of color. So therefore, the absolute focus to end unsheltered homelessness, that suffering on the street, to provide a bed for everybody, is disproportionately going to benefit those communities. And it is something I don't take lightly. Uh it's a slide that you're very clear on, and I think that that's something very important for us to know that if we're truly gonna focus on D E I as a community, and we know it's significantly overrepresented on our street, and we need, we need to call that out and make that a rallying cry for our community as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Uh Mayor, uh thank you so much for coming out. I know we've gone over. Um again, big presentation. Thank you again for the time you've taken out with us. Uh you got a partner in us, obviously, we've all said so. Um and we look forward to hearing, you know, the results of your work as you continue to progress.
Thank you. This is a a great courtesy and thank you. I know it's only been thirty-five days, but I appreciate President Peterson and all of your time and allowing this audience. So thank you. Thank you, Jerry. Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Okay. Uh we'll move on now to Chief Operating Officer Communication. C O O Maurice Nadjogo.
Thank you, uh Deputy Council President uh Simpson. Uh just two things for you. I'm sure you all saw that our Oregon Zoo has a new baby. And she made the national news today. Heidi just sent me a link uh to the Today Show, so. She's so cute. She's the bomb that we all need at these times. Uh and it's it's clear the entire country needs that bomb right now. So um congrats to the to the zoo team uh for doing an amazing job and creating the space for uh Rose Two to give birth naturally and safely. We are advancing the protection of that species, one adorable baby at a time. The other thing I just wanted to mention, and you heard it from Sky, today we are monitoring uh the severe weather alert for tonight uh with the threat of snow, so uh we'll be checking in with our facilities folks this afternoon. And we'll let you know if there's gonna be any curtailments or changes to operations. Thank you.
Any questions?
Can you work with Heidi to find a time for council to visit when it's appropriate?
Absolutely. Yes.
I believe site visits are protected.
I think you have a mandate, yes.
We have to go and see for sure it's okay. Moving on for Counselor Communications, uh Counselor Rosenthal.
I just want to say that the Keller Auditorium hosted the Oregon Lunar New Year uh on Saturday. That was quite a lively event. The Korean drum uh ensemble was great, the the little kids coming out and doing their little colorful dances was wonderful. It was a well-attended and an almost full crowd at the Keller Auditorium. And and I just have to remark, I mean, I grew up in Wisconsin and Minnesota and this severe weather event to me is, it, I I still don't understand it. I've I've seen twenty-four inches of snow in four hours at rush hour. This threat of a few flurries just boggles my mind sometimes, but we're not used to it.
Listen, Counselor Rosenthal, not everybody's, I just drove from Ben through the snow this morning, in the mountain pass, in the little car.
I I used to commute from the Midwest out here in the winter through sometimes five pizzards, so. But people here don't, they're from California a lot, they don't know how to drive in snow.
Not gonna insult our region like.
Nobody should be sleeping outdoors when it's cold and freezing.
And you're correct, nobody should be sleeping outdoors.
Counselor Lewis?
Sure, thank you. Um wanted to give the report back that Counselor Wong and I uh were able to attend a screening of These Sacred Hills. Um a special screening from the Yakima Nation at A T and I last Wednesday night. Um it was a wonderful film and want to thank uh Yakimani Shen and the film producers for the invitation. I believe it was only their fourth public or semi-public screening. And we gave some great feedback that um included, we encouraged them to share it with others across the region. Uh additionally, I needed to report back that OMPAC met on Friday morning. The Oregon M P O Coalition convening, I forget what the C stands for. Met um virtually uh the first of four quarterly meetings this year. I think they meet for the sake of meeting. It was fine.
All right. Any other communications? Okay, seeing no further discussion, the council work session is adjourned. Our next regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday, February sixth, twenty twenty-five at ten thirty A M.